I'd like to call to order the regular formal meeting of the Iowa City City Council for October the 15th, 2019. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Here.
Ms.
Here.
Sully.
Yeah.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Throgmorton.
Here. Before we proceed further, I would like to say a few words in memory of Clemens Erdahl, who served on Iowa City City Council from 1978 through 1985 and who died almost two weeks ago. I didn't know Clemens well at all, but I understand he traveled widely when he was younger and received a B, Bachelor of Arts in General Studies, a Master's in Urban Planning, and a Doctorate in Law, all from the University of Iowa. He believed in the importance of fighting for the common person and was a fierce advocate for social justice. Our thoughts go with his wife Roxanne, their children, and their grandchildren. And I think Rockney knew Clemens very well, so I want to ask Rockney to say a few words.
Thank you so much, Mayor. You know, we all serve the city of Iowa City and we all love this community so much. And as my term comes to a close, I think of the ties that bind all of us, the threads that run through this wonderful patch quilt that we call Iowa City. And Clemens Erdahl was one of the brightest threads. He was a civic leader, he was a rabble-rouser, a man after my own heart, he believed in community service, he was a father, he was a grandfather, he was a poet, he loved ideas, he loved his wife, and he loved this city so much. He served this city with distinction from 1978 to 1985. He was involved in a lot of environmental projects. So when you look at Ralston Creek and what Ralston Creek represents for this community in terms of flooding and all the challenges we've had with that, that was one of the very first issues that got Clemens involved in Iowa City politics. Clemens died much too young. He was a very young, 71-years-old. He died very suddenly, at the height of his powers. He was trying cases up to the very end. And so I think the greatest memory that I think we can give to Clemens is to really remember that we need to seize each day, live in service, and work together in community. And I think that is really one of the best things that we can do to honor his memory and Clemens. I want to thank you for everything that you've done for this community. Thank you.
Nicely said, Rockney. Thanks. Okay, item two, Student Leadership Awards. So we have awards to give to two students from Grantwood Elementary, Katie Ween and Ivan Sherkaras. Did I do that okay? No. I knew it. Can we stand in the center? I'm sorry, I knew I was gonna just misstate your last name. Why don't you say it for us?
Ivan Shinconus.
Shinconus, right. Darn it. Okay. So, first of all, it's great to see you. I hope you're doing beautifully at Grantwood Elementary, and I understand that you are. And it's a terrific school here in Iowa City. And I'll bet your parents are pretty proud of you, too. So I have two awards, of course, one for each of you. And I'm just gonna read the text, and the only thing that differs is that one of them says, did you say Ivan or Ivan?
Ivan.
Ivan. One says Ivan and the other says Katie. Okay. So, Student Leadership Award. For your outstanding qualities of leadership within Grantwood Elementary, as well as the community, and for your sense of responsibility and helpfulness to others, we recognize Ivan Shinconus as an outstanding student leader, and Katie, remind me of your last name? Ween. Yeah, thank you, Katie Ween, as outstanding student leader. Your community is proud of you. Presented by the Iowa City City Council, October 2019. So Katie, would you read your statement first? I'll hold it for you and make it easy on you. If it don't work out that way.
My name is Katie Ween. I believe I was chosen for this award because of how I work quietly and participate during class. I am willing to help other students when they need help with their work or with reading words they don't know. I am involved with activities such as band orchestra, art club, and choir and soccer. This is why I think I was chosen for the Leadership Award.
Bravo. Well done. Thank you. Okay, your time.
Hello, my name is Ivan Shinconus. I would like to thank the Iowa City Mayor and the Iowa City City Council and my teacher, Mr. Glenn, at Grantwood Elementary School for this award. I believe the reasons why my teacher picked this, picked me for this recognition are because I'm a great leader of my team in the classroom. I'm a bank officer that pays people Mr. Glenn bucks, and I don't lie how much they earn. And I'm excelling in ELP, a Extended Learning Program, that requires a lot of responsibility. I am also involved out of school. I am on a competitive swim team, the Iowa City Eels. I bowl on Saturdays and also feed my cats and fish at home. Thank you all very much for this award.
Bravo. So Ivan, I used to be a competitive swimmer, but when I would be swimming down, you know, the 25-meter race or whatever, my dad would look at me and say, "Are you gonna drown, Jim, or what? I mean, you gotta keep swimming harder than that." So anyhow, it's a great thing, swimming like that. All right, so I know the parents are very, very proud of you, so bravo, well done. Keep up the good work at Grantwood Elementary. So here we go. Yep, trade.
Very nice.
Make sure it's yours, right? It is, all right. Well done. Okay, thanks for coming up. Keep up the great work. Oh, go on. Go on. You know, it's funny, I get nervous every time I go out to do that, and sometimes I stumble a little bit, but you know, human, all too human. Proclamations, item number three. We have two proclamations tonight. The first is Change Your Clock, Change Your Battery Day. Whereas the city of Iowa City is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas between the hours of 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. are the peak alarm times for fire deaths, when people tend to be asleep, and whereas almost two-thirds of home fire deaths in the United States resulted from fires in homes with inoperable smoke alarms or no smoke alarms, and whereas the designation of, designation of a special day to remind residents of Iowa City to change the batteries in their smoke alarms, timed to coincide with the fall ritual of changing clocks, would greatly diminish the chance of this tragedy occurring in Iowa City, and whereas smoke alarms should be replaced every 10 years, and whereas November the 3rd, 2019, is the day the citizens of Iowa City changed their clocks from daylight savings time to standard time, now therefore I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim November the 3rd, 2019, to be Change Your Clock, Change Your Battery Day in Iowa City, and urge all residents to change their smoke alarm batteries, install new smoke alarms where needed, and replace smoke alarms if they are 10 years or older. Is there anyone here to accept this proclamation? Come on up. It would be Ben, right? Ben Stammyer?
Yes.
Great to see you here.
Great to see you.
Feel free to say something if you want.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening, my name is Ben Stammyer. I am a firefighter and shift fire inspector for the Iowa City Fire Department. And on behalf of the Iowa City Fire Department, I would like to thank council for recognizing November 3rd as Change Your Clock, Change Your Battery Day. We would like residents to remember that by maintaining smoke alarms, they play an important role in life safety. Smoke alarms are one of the simplest ways to assist with evacuation in the event of a fire. From 2008 to 2017, total fires in our country decreased by 6.2%. However, during that same time, fire-related deaths increased by 9.6%. Fires burn hotter, they burn faster, and with more intensity than they did 30 years ago. It is vitally important that smoke alarms are ready should a fire take place. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Ben. Thanks for the great work the Fire Department does and your fellow firefighters. All right, our second proclamation concerns United Nations Day. Whereas the United Nations was founded in 1945 and the anniversary of the day on which the U.N. Charter came into force is observed each year on October the 24th, and whereas the United Nations is a global multilateral organization comprised of 193 member states, and whereas the United Nations seeks to address and solve some of the world's most pressing challenges related to peace and security, human rights, climate change, sustainable development, food security, and humanitarian and health emergencies, and whereas in 2015, all 193 member states adopted 17 Sustainable Development Goals, also referred to as the Global Goals, to work toward a more just and sustainable future for all. And whereas a recent poll conducted by the Better World Campaign in 2019 reveals that American support for the United Nations is at a 10-year high, and whereas the United Nations Association of the USA is a movement of Americans who believe that our interests and values can best be advanced by supporting the lifesaving work of the United Nations, and whereas the United Nations Association of the USA has more than 20,000 members across 200 chapters in the United States, and whereas the Johnson County Chapter of the UNA/USA is committed to taking local action to support the global goals and the work of the United Nations. Now therefore I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim October the 24th, 2019, as United Nations Day in Iowa City. And I think Jim Olson is here to accept the proclamation. Not just Jim.
Thank you.
Too late.
Thank you.
Thank Mayor Throgmorton and this council for the proclamation. My name is Claire Schaaf. I came to the United States as an international student in 2012. Now I work and live in Iowa City. I'm proud to be a member of United Nations Association of Johnson County Chapter. It allows me to attribute, to contribute to U.N.'s Sustainable Development Goals by working with local businesses to raise awareness and funding. Currently, we work with three restaurants in downtown Iowa City to celebrate United Nations Day on October 24th. We'd like your involvement.
Thank you. My name is Jim Olson. I'm also a member of the Board of the Johnson County Chapter of the United Nations Association. I want to join Claire in thanking the council for the proclamation. As the proclamation mentions, we work locally to try to help citizens be aware of the 17 Sustainable Development Goals and to undertake activities here in Iowa City and throughout Johnson County to advance and promote and implement those goals. As I, as I look up at the screen and I see the seven goals for more inclusive, just, and sustainable Iowa City, I note that those goals are very much in the spirit of the U.N.'s Sustainable Development Goals. And so we have a real linkage between our local aspirations and work at the global level. Tomorrow, our chapter, along with the Iowa City Foreign Relations Council, is sponsoring a U.N. Day event. It will be at noon at the Congregational Church. It will be a discussion of the U.N. and human rights, and I would encourage all of you to attend if your schedule permits. I'd also like to suggest that another appropriate way, an important way, that we can all observe United Nations Day is to communicate with our elected level, our elected officials at the federal level to indicate that, like the majority of Americans, we believe that the United Nations is still a useful instrument for the United States. And I would direct you to our association's website, which is unausa.org, and you can find out more information about that. So once again, thanks to the council for issuing this proclamation, as you have for many, many years.
Thank you, Claire. Thank you, Jim. All right, now we turn to item four, which involves special presentations. This one concerns the UCI Jingle Cross World Cup Cyclocross Race. Say that five times really quickly. Oh, you're kidding, Josh, hi.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I've said, I could probably say it five times fast, because I've been around it for so much. But I'm here tonight just to, again, as I've been in the last three years now, thank the city of Iowa City for joining Johnson County and playing just a really big and very big and important role in the annual production of the Telenet UCI Cyclocross World Cup. This is, was the first stop of this year's event. This is, still continues to be a pretty substantial event here in our community. The Iowa State game made things a little bit more challenging this year. Unfortunately, UCI and the worldwide cycling audience doesn't care as much about the Iowa Hawkeyes as we do when they put together their global schedule, so we were faced with a little bit of a challenge there as it relates to volunteers, but everything ended up working out in the end as it normally does in Iowa City and Johnson County. We put out a call and folks show up and really make it happen. So this was, as I mentioned, the fourth consecutive year that we've been able to welcome really thousands of visitors to our community for this event and hundreds from outside of the United States that travel here from Europe and quite a few teams. And being the first year, we were, or the first stop on this year's tour, they were here for really the entire week. I know Jeff and Nancy Byrd downtown will tell you that she regularly saw Belgians and Dutch and Germans and French in the restaurants and eating pasta at Boston and all the other places that they like to visit while they're in town. So it's, it's important and it's hard to imagine that, but it's actually backed up by data and television viewing audiences. You know, the Iowa Iowa State game had a television viewing audience of, I believe, Nick wrote, 3.2 million this year. And the races that were broadcast live from Iowa City had a global television viewing audience of 11.3 million. So I tell people and I joke that maybe only the .3 was from the United States, but it's still really cool to be able to put on an event that, you know, 11 million people across Europe are watching live from Iowa City, Iowa, and the Johnson County Fairgrounds. So that's the reason we do it. We continue to break even and make a little money on that. And John Meehan, who's our director and pediatrician, or I'm sorry, a surgeon out in Seattle that flies back and takes vacation to put this arm, continues to this day in the now 17th year of the event and fourth year of World Cup to donate every last dollar he makes on the event to the local children's hospital, which is terrific. So I want to thank Jeff and Ashley in particular. This year, we had some rain issues on the day in, leading up, and so Brock and Zach Hall from Parks and Rec came out and were tremendous. We were worried about high winds on Thursday night after the course was, we took a week to set up the course. You know, Brock had his guys show up with three pallets of sandbags from the city, you know, within an hour, and we took care of the fence and nothing blew down. So the city really does step up and support us, and it's, it's a, it's a big deal and a big return for the community. So in keeping with the tradition of bringing you a little token of this year's event, we have a little print that Nick, Nick put together and that you can hang here, and this is a picture of this year's Women's World Cup champion. Her name is Maggiela Rochette, and she's from Canada. And so you can see just her, her first World Cup win, and we'll hang it somewhere next to the past year's event, somewhere in the lobby. So we'll, you want to present that up to the mayor and happy to answer any questions, otherwise just want to say thanks for all you continue to do with the county.
See that?
Very nice.
So it's great to look at everybody's expression there. I love those kind of photos. So. Any questions? If not, thanks very much, and we'll carry on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a great event, and the CVB led by Josh did superb work on it and so many other things. Thanks for the great work, Josh.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna turn to the consent calendar, which is items five through 10. Could I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented or amended? Second. Advised by, seconded by Cole. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes. Motion carries, seven to zero. Item 11, Community Comment. This is the moment when anybody who has something that they'd like to tell us about any item that is, or anything that's not on the formal meeting agenda, should please feel free to come up and speak to us. First person goes first. And please state your name and take not more than, I don't know, three or four minutes to express your views. Please.
All right, thank you for letting us speak to you tonight. My name's Lucy Barker, and I'm one of the directors of Houses into Homes.
And I'm Erin Silva, and I'm one of the board members.
So you may already be aware of our nonprofit organization, Houses into Homes. We provide beds, furniture, and other household items to families and individuals transitioning out of homelessness or other crisis situations in the Iowa City area. Two-thirds of our recipients live in Iowa City. We have delivered beds, furniture, and other items to 208 households since February 2018. Those households include 702 community members, which is 294 adults and 408 children. Many local social service agencies depend on us to provide beds and furniture for their clients, including Johnson County Social Services, Shelter House, the Iowa City Community School District, Domestic Violence Intervention Program, the Iowa City Police Department, two UIHC clinics, and others. There's also increasing community awareness of our organization and growing financial support from individual donors.
One of our recipients told us, having decent furniture makes you feel like not an animal. You feel like a human being, being able to go and lay in your bed, sit on your couch, sit at the table and eat your food, even having dishes to eat your food. It doesn't seem like something when it's something you're used to having your whole life. It doesn't seem like a big deal that you have a plate or that you have a bowl or cups or anything, but when you look around and you don't have those things and you don't have the means to get those things, it's like top priority. It's the only thing you think about because you're walking around your safe place and it's not feeling so warm and safe. You're not having the things that you're used to having there. Having furniture and other things in your home is definitely big for your confidence. It's definitely big for feeling that humanity, but also, too, to feel a bit of structure in your life. It's so funny how drastically different life feels when you're in an empty apartment. I don't know how to explain it. It's just even your mood, too, can feel kind of empty. And the apartment where it's like, I feel blah right now, I'm looking at white walls and looking at just wall-to-wall carpet with nothing breaking it up, it can make you feel crazy sometimes.
Our program improves the physical and emotional well-being of Iowa City residents most in need by providing a comfortable place to sit, sleep, and eat. Evidence indicates that improved sleep quality produces decreases in stress, reductions in depression, improved mental health and decision-making, and better performance at school and at work. Our organization diverts many tons of household items from the landfill, and we provide a service that no other organization in the community provides. While some social service agencies are able to provide a bed or meet their client's household needs piecemeal, Houses into Homes collects donated beds, furniture, and other items, plans of full furnish, and delivers all at once. We are at a critical point, however, where we are having to reduce our services because of a lack of funding. We have requested to meet with each of you and have been pleased to meet with Rockney and Bruce, as well as Erica Kubli, Tracy Hightew, and Tracy Hightew, and we have continued to have a relationship with the leaders of the landfill and the recycling departments. We ask tonight that the rest of the city councilors find time to meet with us in the next two weeks so we can tell you more about the vital service we provide to Iowa City residents and the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'd like to make a request, for me in particular. Would you please send me another email or a copy of that email so that I can respond to you?
Yes, and I have a flyer. Should I just? Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
You're up.
You're up. Please state your name, and if you haven't written it down already, please do.
Sign here?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Bruce probably knows. You have the, just last, I'll share. There we go. Let's see. Hi, my, my name is Jonathan Dean, and I'm, and, and I've, and I actually am, I'm here tonight in regards to like, to like further development and zoning, such as, I've written this letter here about two proposed developments, and I'm hoping someone will take this letter from me afterward and...
Okay, sure.
Yeah.
When you're finished with it, Jonathan, just hand it to our city attorney over here.
Okay, oh, and, and I'm, it's about, you know, downtown student housing. First off, if you, I don't, I don't know if any, you probably have noticed in the last, oh, some five years that, that we've been destroying a lot of historical buildings and making, you know, and making like, a lot of like high-rising fancy housing that, that, and the fact, and replacing them with more student housing, it, is that, there's been a proposal to demolish these apartments, these Pennacresse apartments, I think that are just off Burlington and Gilbert Street, and replace them with, with newer, with like more high-rise buildings and making, I mean, I want to make sure we can make it more affordable, because the, what, the average college student, that, you know, they can't afford high rent. And then second of all, I would, I would like to say, you know, I'd like to limit the stories of how, of how, how many stories we have, because I've lived here now, oh, 25 going on 26 years, and when I got here, I'm originally actually from California, and you think in California, oh, fancy buildings, well, in my, in my town, where I grew up, Merced, they didn't have too many. They didn't have more than like two or, two or three-story buildings. It was that poor. It was in the San Joaquin Valley of like, near Fresno, so when I got here, I was like, there were a lot of like taller buildings, and, but they didn't go up more than 10 stories high. I think that the tallest building when I arrived here was the Veterans Administration Medical Center at 10 stories. And I don't want to think of Iowa City as a major city like Chicago. And I don't want future generations of students, new coming residents, to feel that way, too. I, I want them to be more of, keep Iowa City the not-too-big, not-too-small, college working-class town, which is the right size on how I found it. And, and I feel like that, you know, like, like I was referring to in the beginning, I, I don't want students to have to, you know, pay like, to pay outrageously high rent. That, that should not be Iowa, although it's, I understand the cost of living in Iowa City has always been going up and will probably continue, but you know, we, we, we need to, you know, we need to cut it off at some point. And I feel like, and with, not to mention that the average college students is struggling just to make ends meet. And second, there, there is, I, I was told about... And second, there is, I was told about a proposed building complex on the Ped Mall, and there's a lot of mixed commercial businesses, like the one that was, I know, a little controversial some years ago, like where I think it was, it was like where that old historical, that old place, I think where the Red Avocado used to be some, some years ago, and it was, it was just, I know that was a pretty devastating loss, but then they eventually relocated, became Trumpet Blossom. But at the end, you know, and the last thing needed in Iowa City to me is more, is more like real estate development. There are so many, many mixed commercial use buildings, many have gone up within the past, I don't know, some less than 10 years, I think. Do you really have to keep knocking out that extra space just to, just, so that you could put in more like, like more development? And there's, and there's some like on Iowa Avenue, and there was some that, and there was some, I think there was some like old, who was it? Ted Pocka, that destroyed the, that was like demolished some, you know, I think he, he was retiring and had, you know, wanted to sell the property. I know there was, there was a bitter, bitter legal fight for, to save him, but I could understand why they could, they could have gone either way, or maybe we need to do more historical preservation to make it, because we're an old city. We're like, you know, it's so, to me, you know, it's like, you know, if we could preserve more historical buildings, that would be great. And, and, you know, keep this symbolic view of Iowa City as a college town and not a big city. That's all I have to say.
Great, great, Jonathan, thank you. Could you hand that to our city attorney, please? Could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Cole, seconded by Sway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you, Jonathan.
It's good seeing you again, too. Hi, Brandon.
Hey. I'm Brandon Ross. Jonathan's bang on. I think Iowa City is unaffordable. It's unaffordable. Can't live, can't live in Iowa City unless you have, unless you have the bucks. You know, yesterday I was going to mail a package, but the post office was closed. It was Columbus Day, right? And I thought, there's something ironic about it, because Columbus, he was very inaccurate navigator, wasn't he? He didn't really end up where he was going. He was trying to go someplace, he ended up in someplace else. And I thought, well, the post office, they're very accurate as navigators. They always get to where they're going. But they're closed for Columbus Day. When Columbus got finally to the place where he got, he basically, he basically hurt people and exterminated them in order to get their stuff, which was basically what they called precious metals, to bring back to Portugal. And he might have been the first key capitalist. And yet we celebrate this Columbus Day. Some states actually call it Native American Day, or Native Peoples' Day. I would support that. I know that the council made a proclamation a couple weeks ago to have a Native American Day, that we were declaring that there would be a Native American Day, that these people who have lived in this, in these continents for 20,000 years, now they get one day. And I thought, well, what are they going to do on this day? Right? What are they going to do? Well, what can we offer them? We got, we got bowling alley. Maybe they go free bowling. You know, maybe, maybe they're allowed to live in some of these new apartments that are going up, that are stuck up there by, by our millionaires for the rich. How about them getting some of those, instead of always getting the lowest? Just having a day, it makes us feel good, you know, makes us feel good. We're saying, we're giving the Native Americans a whole day. Man, isn't that something? A whole day. So later, after Columbus, you know, we, you know, settlers came here and exterminated the Native American populations. They just took their guns with their, with their metal, and they turned what the natives called "nature" into property. And they thought that was pretty cynical and satanic. And then they replaced those people with Afro peoples that they had stolen from their land. This is 400 years ago. And Afro people built this country's capital up. They worked 16-hour days. They built the White House, ironically. And where the Afro people live today? They live in the poorer sections. You look at this council here, you see a diverse council. I give people credit for voting in that way. You look in the council chambers, it's all white. There are no black folks. There are no Native Americans here. Where are they? Where's their power? There's some minorities here, maybe, in the, in the back here behind me. I think there's a couple of journalists, if they're writing about something important, that would be, that would be a minority. So you look at Iowa City, we have a Native American Day, and we have an Afro-American month, which actually is the shortest month of the year. Meanwhile, these peoples are living in the poorest conditions, are profiled, are being murdered, as if we're still in Jim Crow. We're being heavily policed. Even Iowa City is partly to blame in these areas. They are segregated. They're segregated in our town. And we can do a lot better. But just to call something a Native American Day, or an Afro-American month, that's cool for liberals. You know, we feel good. You know, we feel good, we feel safe now. We gave, we gave, we said that. You know? But it's nothing. It's nothing, there's no action there. You know, when Barack Obama came into office, he promised a lot of great things and everything. You designate days, but we have to do better. We have to do better with working class and poor, our native people, our Afro-American people, our Latino people. We have to do better by nature. And I think that constitutionally, nature needs to have rights. I know, five minutes, right? That's what we get.
You're at it.
Yep, you're at it.
Matt Hayek used to say, you know the drill. Get it over with. But I, we appreciate this, to be able to come here and say this, and hope that you're not just biding your time playing games on your iPhones back there. I'm sure you're not. I appreciate everybody on the council and management, but we can do a hell of a lot better on these issues. Well, let's go.
Please wrap it up, thanks. Anyone else? Hey, Liz.
My name's Liz Moss. I live at 743 Kirkwood Avenue in Iowa City. I just wanted to tell you guys, thank you for the bang-up job of handling, getting Greta here safely, and making sure everybody in our community was, was okay. Those events sometimes can draw some strange things, as was noted in the press, and I just wanted to tell you that, to mobilize and get everybody, make it happen as soon and as fast as you did, because I know the notification for her arrival was pretty slim, slim timeline. Just wanted to tell you thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone else, we will turn to item 12, planning and zoning matters. Item 12A, regulating plan amendment for 625 South Gilbert Street. This is an ordinance amending the Riverfront Crossings regulating plan to include the property located at 625 South Gilbert Street in the Central Crossing Sub District, and this is second consideration. Could I have a motion for second consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Cole. Discussion? Danielle?
Mayor, Danielle Sussman, NDS, just wanted to mention with this agenda item and the one that follows it, a brief update. We have received the signed CZA that goes with item 12B, the rezoning for 305 and 315. I can give you a brief synopsis of the changes that were made at that time.
Would anybody like to address this topic?
This is just A, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll be back up for B.
I like brief comments, that's great. So, anyone else? Okay, council discussion? I guess we said enough last time. Hearing no discussion, roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Frog Martin?
No.
Cole?
Yes.
Item carries seven, six to one, sorry. And moving on to item 10B, 12B, sorry.
Jim, could you accept correspondence for...
Oh, could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
Second.
Moved by Sway, seconded by Teague. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're on item 12B, rezoning at 305 and 315 East Prentice Street and 625 South Gilbert Street. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 1.6 acres of land located at 305 and 315 East Prentice Street and 625 South Gilbert Street from intensive commercial, CI-1, and community commercial, CC-2, to Riverfront Crossings, Central Crossings, RFC-CX. I need to reopen the public hearing. Danielle?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to summarize the changes that were incorporated into the signed CZA tonight, there was a minor edit made to correct accidental deletion, and then two items that were, I would say, substantively changed, but not much. One was regarding the required improvements to Ralston Creek. We withdrew the city's wording that required tree planting in Ralston Creek. The applicant asked us to do that. They would intend to propose improvements to Ralston Creek as part of their bonus height discussion, and wanted to have the flexibility to design the creek bed in that manner, and it might not include tree plantings as we had specified. So we requested the minimum improvements in case the bonus height request did not include creek improvements. We're satisfied with that. The other change we made was to remove the exhibit that showed paving of a trail along Ralston Creek, but does still secure the easement, so a trail could be placed there. So those are the two changes in the revised CZA.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, so I've got just a couple things here.
I think you're Liz Moss again, right?
I'm Liz Moss again, yes. Sorry, I am Liz Moss again. Still, still Liz Moss. So the first one is a recommendation to revisit the parking requirements. I know you received, you should have received correspondence from Martha Norbeck, some information about parking requirements and how we could do different things with parking. Of course, just building more parking spaces encourages people to continue to drive cars, which I don't think Greta would like. Then, the other question I have is, I'm really impressed, actually, with page 165 of the packet. It talks about the specific portion of the code 142G, 7G8-8, that talks about restoration of Ralston Creek, which, you know me, I am all about Ralston Creek getting restored. That's totally my jam. Appreciate that you've identified bioswales, rain gardens, green roofs, rainwater harvesting, streambank stabilization, with a maintenance plan. That's even better, right? That's awesome. So my question is, could we modify the code, which I realize is a big deal, ultimately to also include, instead of tying it specifically to improvements to the landscape, which is also important from a biodiversity protection standpoint, but doesn't do necessarily a ton for climate change, could we do things that relate to electrification? So more and more regions are looking at electrification as a climate action strategy. We know that Mid-America isn't trying to install more and more wind power, and the aspiration of this will be that we have, just our energy comes primarily from wind and solar, and if we continue forward with either natural gas, we know that that's a loser, right? And so could we instead tie some of these height requirements, or height extensions, the bonus height that you can do, be more specific exactly with what we're talking about, and just sort of saying, oh, if you do lead, we'll give you some extra height stuff? Well, but what does that actually mean? So it's nice that you have a lot of specifics in regard to environment, restoration of the creek, but those same sorts of specifics aren't included in energy efficiency. So can we, can we change that and prove that? That's my question. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Anyone else? Hi, Davis.
Hey, Davis Maxwell, the applicant, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you once again for your time and consideration to support this rezone, not only on behalf of myself, but also Mr. Boyd, his wife Judy, and our team, and our company, Capstone. We're excited about the opportunity to bring a quality housing development to the city of Iowa City. We think we have a fantastic location. We think we have a fantastic site that will serve residents who not only attend the University of Iowa, but also these residents that will continue to shop, walk to campus, bike to campus, and visit the great retail that your vibrant downtown has. I travel to a lot of these colleges and universities throughout the country, and, and one thing that does stick out to me is the, the life that you have in the downtown retail corridor that is, you know, not far from our site. So once again, thank you. We, we look forward to continuing to work through this process.
Davis, could I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
You and I chatted about this briefly, right before the meeting started. In our last meeting, I asked if you could provide the market analysis?
Sure.
And you just told me, right before the meeting, that you're not able to get it yet? Could you tell us whether we'll have that next time?
Yeah, I'll give you an update. So the, the first meeting that we had was on October the 1st. Our market consultant, who's Danner and Associates, Danner Company, they're out of Columbus, Ohio. They do business all over the country, not only for, for student housing, but market rate, and they've also worked with different municipalities to provide market studies for whatever the request may be. They were in the market the week before October the 1st. I did speak with our consultant on Friday. They're in the process of updating that report. I'll be glad to share that report with, with you, Mr. Mayor, as well as the city. We would ask that we sign a confidentiality agreement, and I'm sure that we can work that out with not only Capstone, but also the city. I anticipate having that report soon, probably before the end of the month. It was just an update to a prior study that was performed in 2018, actually, February of 2018. But once we have that, let me review it, let me review it with my team, and then I'll be in touch with you to discuss how we can share that document.
I think one of the numbers you had described at our previous meeting was your, your view that it was approximately a 5% vacancy rate that you were looking at in the Riverfront Crossings District, or was that as the city as a whole?
No, it's actually, it was, it was less than a 2% vacancy rate for the immediate area.
The immediate area, okay.
The immediate area. You know, there are, and then another stat that was brought up in that market study, that a thing out of like 5,900 units that were studied in the effective area that will be shown in the market study, that 70% of those units, which were both purpose-built student housing, market-rate housing, 70% of those units were occupied by students who attended the University of Iowa. But the immediate area in general is less than 2%.
It was 2%.
That's correct.
Okay, and then market-wide, was, you threw out a 5% number, or maybe that wasn't?
Yeah, I don't recall that.
All right, sounds good.
I'd like to ask you another question.
Sure, go ahead.
Although we're focusing on the proposed rezoning right now, you know that last time we had considerable conversation about height bonuses, and we were expressing informal views about what kind of bonuses we'd like to see, and what would be, we'd be willing to offer, and that kind of thing?
Sure.
And there was some extensive discussion, I think, with regard to the, basically, the energy efficiency of the proposed building, especially with regard to the climate crisis resolution that we adopted in August. So I'm wondering, you don't have to elaborate on this right now, but I'm wondering if you've had a chance to think about that, and how that could play out with regard to your particular project?
Yeah, I think that's a great question, and yes, that is something that we are going to consider and pursue for the height bonus. You know, Liz, thank you for bringing up the, one way to reduce that carbon footprint would be to reduce the parking requirement that the city of Iowa City has imposed on developers that want to come to the market. You know, we're, we're, we have a three-story parking structure. We would love to have lower than 20% parked. I mean, we're .3 miles to the front edge of campus. No student, or no, no student, or I would be willing to say that... No student, or no student, or I would be willing to say that the majority of residents that would attend or live at our complex are not going to be driving to campus. They're going to be walking or biking to campus. So, if that's something that the council would consider, I think you would need to change your ordinance, but to reduce that parking footprint that has been posed on not only me but other developers that want to come to the city, we would certainly welcome that. Also, you know, when we get into the design of the building, Mr. Mayor, we, you know, would look to reduce that carbon footprint within the building, provide energy-efficient fixtures, lots of daylight, the carbon footprint, water, have water meters for each individual unit so you can monitor consumption by each individual resident. So, there's a long list of items that we look at in order to make our project more sustainable.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for Davis?
Yeah, that sparked something, a question for me. You mentioned the water meters for each resident. Does that mean that that's yet again going to be another additional cost? Are you going to charge that out, or will it be charged out to the resident?
You know, that's something that we'll consider as we look and, you know, how we're going to structure, you know, we're going to look at neighboring competitors to see what they're doing, are they including water and sewer. I believe, you know, what I currently have in my model right now, that would actually be, I would pay for that. That would be an amenity or a perk for you to live in my building. But, one thing that we find that's beneficial for us is we've developed these projects all across the country. We do like to sub-meter each and every unit. And the reason why we do that is because we might put a cap on that water, you know, if that unit's going over a allotted amount, then we like to see why, right? You know, Pauline, if your unit is all of a sudden more excessive than Mr. Mayor's right here, well, why? You know, number one, you need to pay for it, but then two, you're going to collect that overage. So we can manage each individual unit's consumption.
Any other questions? Thanks, Davis.
Yeah.
We might ask you to come back up in a minute, depending on how our conversation goes.
Thank you.
But thanks for coming.
Just a quick comment on the, I wasn't aware that the confidentiality agreement was, would be necessary. We won't be able to sign that. Once the document's in our hands, it'll be a, it'll be a public record.
We're legally required to make it public, is that, or make it available to the public, right? All right. Hey, Tom, how are you?
Good, thank you. I'm Tom Gelman. I'm local counsel for Capstone Collegiate Communities. My job, I think, right, at this moment is to try to bring focus to the discussion. We've had a very useful kind of broad discussion of issues associated with this development, but I think maybe you've gotten a little ahead of the actual process. And it's difficult not to do that. I mean, I understand that. There are many steps in this process. Probably the next steps are going to be quite a bit more substantive in terms of the specifics of this project than the current step, but the current step is really quite preliminary. And it's this rezoning so that we're dealing with an area of land that can be redeveloped that is in the same zone. I mean, I think there's two principal objectives at this early phase. One is the development of a site pursuant to the Riverfront Crossings Form-Based Code, which we're about halfway there now. And I think we all realize the benefits to the community of doing that because the Form-Based Code is such a comprehensive code that's been so thoughtfully put together by staff and by the community and by the council. And so by doing that, we can rely upon that code to serve a lot of the purposes that this council has expressed some interest in. The second thing that we're really trying to do here is to redevelop this as a single site. Right now, it's sort of a multiple site. There's multiple uses on the site. And so the proposal here is to redevelop it as a single site. That really wasn't anticipated under the comprehensive plan. Some redevelopment was, but redevelopment of the entire site wasn't really anticipated. But it makes a lot of sense to do it that way. The Gilbert Street site as a separate site doesn't make much sense and going forward, redevelopment of this area as an entire site really offers some interesting benefits for the entire community. The site is such, so ultimately the rezoning is requesting that you consider doing it, making this a single zone so that as we move forward with the development process, it can be developed as a single site. We've talked about the height issue. We've talked about affordable housing-related issues. We've talked about some development considerations and improvement to the creek. All those will manifest themselves in the next stages of this process and really aren't directly relevant to this rezoning phase. What is most relevant to the rezoning phase is getting this rezoned as a single site that can be developed as a residential facility under the Form-Based Code. So that's really what we're trying to do here. And I'd like, it would be helpful to keep the focus there, I think, for this particular vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I think it's helpful to be reminded that our, the topic at hand is the rezoning. I think we're very conscious of that, but we've also been advised it would be helpful to the developer for us to signal our thinking about height bonuses, but the focus here now is on the rezoning for sure. Anybody else want to address this? Hi, Nancy, how are you?
Four years ago, we had a very contentious election. When it was over, we citizens believed we had sent a message that we wanted a more conservative, mid-rise approach to development. The Riverfront Crossings Plan was an in-depth look at this whole area with an all-encompassing and enthusiastic participation from we citizens. The consensus was a mid-rise approach be used to develop this area. The consulting company that was experienced in development and how to do it successfully developed the plan, they agreed with this approach. Mid-rise development would be the most successful approach in our city. When the zoning code was drawn up, why were the incentives at the very end included? They have the power to sabotage the whole plan, which they have been doing and continue to do, and that is why I am here tonight. I feel appalling when even though the majority of citizens made it known they wanted a mid-rise type of development both through the Riverfront Crossings Plan and election, business goes on as usual. Will we ever see a zoning code that will support the Riverfront Plan supported by the Iowa City citizens? Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, seeing no one else, counsel discussion, but before we do that, I need to ask if you are inclined to vote in accordance with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to approve, to vote in favor of the proposed rezoning?
I am.
Yeah, I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads, so we can proceed. So, I think I can close the public hearing now? I'm going to close it. All right, could I have a motion to give first consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms., seconded by Cole. Counsel discussion.
I'm in favor of this rezoning and it's kind of interesting that we're doing this right after the work session we had tonight when we were talking about Riverfront Crossings in depth and actually looking at the Opticos recommendation that, why hadn't we rezoned all of this to Riverfront Crossings as a bulk rezoning? And as we talked about at that time, the reason was that for certain elements, the city wanted something. We wanted right-of-way along South Gilbert Street, you know, we wanted to reopen Capitol Street and other things. So now we're kind of at a parcel-by-parcel kind of process in doing these rezonings. But, that has been the goal from the get-go, from when that comp plan was done, was that this area would all be rezoned. The height bonuses are a separate piece and I think that's one of the things Mr. Gelman's tried to make sure we focus on because certainly, and I get your point, Jim, the developers need to have an idea at a certain point where we are on that, but the only thing that we actually should be, in my opinion, focused on as we talk about this vote tonight, is the actual rezoning. And I think it's totally appropriate to rezon to the Riverfront Crossings.
As I look at this project, the rezoning exactly, that's what we're talking about tonight and I have no problem rezoning this parcel. But, I have huge concerns about this project when it comes down to, you know, the 259 parking spaces that we're talking about and climate change, what we can do there. The eight stories, I'm not too worried about that, but when we're talking about, you know, all the residents that'll be there. And then we talk about each unit having their own water meter, each unit being individually I'm sorry, but this to me seems a little, you know, I was okay up until I heard the water meter. Whereas it'd be placed there, you'll probably pay for it now, you just want to be able to monitor the usage. If you put a unit of AC or heating at every, in every unit at some point, my assumption is that bill will be the responsibility of the tenant. So I don't want to get into a lot of that because you're exactly right, we'll be able to get into this more, but as I'm hearing these things and I want to make sure that this, you know, the intended renters of these properties are not put in a position by counsel where essentially they're taken advantage of.
I, in terms of the planning and zoning, of course, I'm going to be voting for that because I agree for this. I don't have a problem, but I really agree with Bruce for a lot thing here. And I know that this is planning and zoning matter and we have to focus on that, but I guess we heard from the staff, especially from Jeff, that we always, if we give an idea about height or even like something else, will help the developer pursue later. See, I'm concerned that, just Bruce said, especially treating the water as amenity, that's really strange. And especially this apartment will be furnished and you put meter there and you rent the apartment by rooms. And if it's two-bedroom apartment, who use the water more than the other? You know, I don't know. Since you furnished apartment, I believe the water should be included because this is furnished apartment. It's become as if like the hotels, you know, rooms. But, the water would be really concerned for the, if you have one meter and you have different people live there in the apartment and the water come like $100 and somebody will say, "I did not use the water that much, I wasn't here," or anything. I don't know, this is going to be really concerned. And also, just as I said last time, I really would like to see some kind of affordability in every single thing here in Riverfront Crossing. And those will be the thing that's going to concern me when it come to the point that we're going to talk about the height and the affordable housing piece to it.
I agree with everything Councilwoman Solie and Teague have said. And I will agree to the rezoning because as Susan Mims had said, we discussed this earlier and it is necessary that we look at the rezoning of this area so that the entire Riverfront Crossing is consistent. But, there's just a number of items, I have to tell you, that I'm uncomfortable with about this proposal. And, Mr. Gelman, you mentioned that you think that we've gotten ahead of the process, but I think the developers themselves have led us into that because they already immediately proposed that it's going to be an eight-story building, which leads us into the height discussion. And the 259 parking spaces leads us into the questions about the sustainability of it and the carbon footprint. And now tonight, we hear about the water being an amenity. And I, yes, it is a necessity, it's important and shouldn't be charged. Solie brought up a great concern because you, the last meeting had said that there would be three separate bedrooms with three locked doors so that individuals could rent at the same time. But, again, how are you going to parcel out that water bill then? There just are a lot of concerns and such a long building, it's a massive long building, I have concerns about that. The three floors of parking with all of those spaces. The Ralston Creek, I think the last time, you can correct me, but I don't know if others heard this too, when you were here, you talked about sprucing up the creek and talked about for public use. And I could swear that you said something about using it for canoeing or kayaking. And I think that just sends up a red flag that you're not familiar with the creeks in Iowa City. They're not usable in that form. Yes, they do need to be spruced up, especially Ralston Creek, there's need for that, but I think that also should just be part as you're owning that property to take care of that. But, those are just my concerns. But I will vote for the rezoning, as I said, because it is necessary to get this consistency in that district.
So, with this discussion about mid-rise and high-rise, I think for me, the thing to emphasize is that even at its max, this will be a mid-rise development, okay? This is not a high-rise. A mid-riser defined as stories between four and nine structures, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that that's what the Riverfront Crossing Plan calls for. In terms of our carbon emission goals, one thing that is very clear is that mid-rise structures are the most energy-efficient buildings available. And so if we're serious about our carbon emission reduction goals, why we would not support this in full, it does not make any sense to me. And in fact, there's an article, "Seven Rules for Sustainable Communities." Patrick Condon compared three business, three structure types, ground-oriented structures, three or fewer stories, mid-rise structures with four and nine stories, and high-rise structures, 10 and more. And he said that by far, the mid-rise structure is the best structure for carbon emission goals. It is not a high-rise structure. Pauline, I'm hearing you on the 259, but that's required by code.
Right.
As far as I can tell. So, we cannot blame the developer for responding to what is required by us. I'm sure if we were to and if we were able to in a way that we could do consistent with our ordinance, they would gladly reduce that. And in fact, I think the next council will seriously have to look at our completely antiquated parking requirements. I mean, this is an old-school issue where the presumption was is everyone is going to have a car. That is no longer, I think, a valid presumption in some cases. I don't think that we should write the rules as we go along. We have to honor the existing requirement. I think if there is a path forward for them to come to a lower parking requirement that's consistent with our ordinance and our legal counsel and counsel as a whole, I'd love to find a way to do that, but I don't think we can blame them for complying with our code. It is a student-oriented development, but we have 30-plus thousand students. We do also have precedent for student-oriented districts. I think to the individual units, joint and sever liability, as Susan mentioned, is a huge problem. What happens if you get one tenant that leaves a unit? That means the other two tenants are stiffed and in some cases can have crippling financial repercussions associated with that. This is a good solution in my view. We have a lot of houses where we have five students in one room and you'll have, you know, two that could be, you know, three could leave, so it's a huge problem. This allows each individual tenant to be responsible for their own individual rent and I think that's a good thing. I wouldn't like that expanded throughout the community as a model. That's obviously, I think, limited to our student population and our base. I think related to the water issue, I think that was responsive to a question that was presented in terms of efficiency. My guess is, is there would be some further discussions about that. And I think in terms of water use, certainly California does closely monitor individual water consumption and I think in the Midwest, we don't do that as much. we don't do that as much. I think in terms of how that's done, I'm confident that they would work with us in a way that's consistent with our community values and also achieving our water efficiency that we also want to support. So I think this is a great project. I'm really hopeful we can get a bike path or some usable space near the creek. You know, Pauline, you bring up the point of, well, why wouldn't they just go ahead and do that anyway, clean up the creek? Well, I guess why wouldn't we do it? Because it costs a lot of money to do it. And I think if they're going to, you know, get some of the height bonus, I think it's fair then that we ask them to provide some of that public amenity, as far as that goes. So I think this is a good project. I think we have to keep it in balance, and maybe not if every project was like this, we need to maybe reconsider. But this also is going to, and I believe this is true, some people maybe don't believe this, but I do believe that this sort of capacity, we are getting, we're so close to getting the capacity we need to take pressure off of the neighborhoods in terms of having six students in a house, which is not ideal for the students, it's not ideal for the neighborhood. I think we're so close, and when we're so close to get there, to sort of put our thumb in the dyke and say, we're not going to do that, I just don't understand that. So I'm supportive of this, and I'm hoping that we have a collaborative process going forward to sort of meet our values, as well as the needs of the developer in this individual instance. I will be supporting this.
Well, we did have that conversation earlier tonight about our bonus height provision, and we're not approving the bonus heights tonight. But I do think while we're really considering the rezoning, it certainly follows on our work session discussion, three out of the eight stories of this project are parking. And so the, you know, the building height question is resolved if we can reduce the parking requirement. And then, again, this is another good example of what are we trying to incentivize, what are we trying to promote? And then, this is also a pretty good example of the embodied carbon issue. All the embodied carbon that goes into those three floors of parking is considerable. So that's a huge issue on this project, it seems, from a lot of different points of view. I hope we can revisit the parking requirement. I think that addresses the affordability or climate action and the urban planning component as well.
I guess it's my turn, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Got to be clear about these things. Okay, we just did a vote about amending the regulating plan. And given the fact that a 6-1 majority of the council clearly wants to amend the plan, that means when we come to this next time, the question of rezoning will be based on the fact that the regulating plan has been amended. So given that, I will, as I did last time, support the proposed rezoning. I think it would be completely appropriate. But I've been listening to what my fellow council members have been saying. And also, I have considerable concerns in my own mind about the proposed height bonuses, especially in relation to the climate crisis resolution that we adopted last August. So I'm not going to say much more about that, but just given what people have been saying, I think our council, once we complete the rezoning process, our council is going to have to arrange a work session focused on the proposed height bonuses for this project, because clearly there's, it's an iffy kind of thing, and we're going to have two new members anyhow come the time, I think by the time we get to the height bonus decision. And with regard to that, I wonder if there are viable ways in which we can incorporate transportation alternatives that substantially reduce the necessary amount of parking. If there are viable ways of doing that, I think that'd be good from a developer's point of view, it would be good from a cost point of view, it'd be good from a climate action point of view, and it would probably be good from a renter's rent point of view. I don't know if it's possible, that's the kind of thing we'd have to learn more about, and Eleanor and Jeff are the people we'd have to turn to on that. So the bottom line is, I'm going to support the rezoning.
I would just follow up with one comment. I totally support, Rockne, you made the point, and I think I made it last time, the parking is driven by our current code. And I think we've all had that conversation of revisiting our parking code. But that's not going to be a quick and easy fix. And so I would seriously doubt that there would be anything that we could do in a timeframe that would be beneficial for this particular project to reduce the parking. I mean, we can't look at this just as a one-project issue in terms of parking. We need to look at it, the whole downtown area, the whole surrounding area. I mean, I was surprised with an email that I got today, and I questioned Jeff between in the break about an error in the email about the waiting time to get permits for our ramps downtown for employers, whose employees want to park in the ramps downtown. And I was shocked at how long that waiting list is, and how long it can take people to get a parking permit if they work downtown and feel the need to drive and park downtown. So this can't be a knee-jerk reaction in terms of changing the parking requirements. If we're going to take on more of that responsibility as a city, if we're not going to take it on, but we're not going to require others to do it, we'd have to have that discussion of what does that mean for our businesses downtown? Will people work downtown? Will other companies want to come downtown if their employees can't park? Changes to the transit will help, but I might just throw that out, that a lot of people have talked about the parking. I don't see that as even a point of discussion for this particular project because of the timeframe.
What I heard Rockne and Mayor Throgmorton say is just to review to see if there was any pathway forward. You know, we understand, our understanding of the code right now, not sure if that is point-blank the end. But I think they just asked for it to be reviewed just to see if there's any other opportunities to decrease the parking.
Or we, maybe you can ask the developer directly, maybe they will agree or not. That's could be something in discussion.
I don't think we can do this as a one-off kind of thing, only for one developer, so...
Yes, that's what I mean.
I think we're forgetting, you keep talking, and Rockne, you kept stressing that this is a mid-rise, and yes, indeed, if it's the eight stories, hence the reason they require the 259 spaces in the first place, because it is going to be a higher building. More residential spaces requires, according to our code, more parking spaces. So that's why there's 259, which is the alarming number to a number of us and the environmentalists. That's a pretty large carbon footprint, but it's because of the height of the building. But again, like I said last time, if those cars and people aren't there, they're going to be further out, and they're going to be more likely to drive those cars to get to campus or to get closer to downtown, so then they can walk or bike to the campus. So by having them that much closer to campus, there's that much more likelihood that those cars are just going to sit there the majority of the time, rather than being driven as much.
Well, there are topics to discuss further, but we have a question before us, and the question is, do we want to rezone this property? And unless there's further discussion on that point, I would ask for a roll call.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Memms?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
Move. Second.
Moved by Sully, second by Memms. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And the first motion carries seven to nothing. Okay, item 12C, fringe area rezoning, American Legion Road. This involves a letter to the Johnson County Planning and Zoning Commission in support of a rezoning from County A to County Residential R for approximately 25.32 acres of property located in unincorporated Johnson County, north of American Legion Road and south of 400th Street. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Memms, second by Cole. Discussion, Danielle?
Thank you, Mayor Danielle Stasman. Yes, this is a request for a rezoning in the fringe area. It's an area highlighted on this slide on the right-hand side in the red dashed area. The left-hand side is current, City of Iowa City corporate limits. In this slide, you can see the fringe area identified in different shades of blue and purple on the left-hand side. One is the growth boundary area in the fringe area, and then one is the outside growth boundary area. This project is located in Area B, outside the growth area and in the fringe area agreement. The fringe area agreement is a component of our comprehensive plan. It applies to these kinds of areas, and it provides guidance regarding land development. Staff does rely on the fringe area agreement in reviewing requests for comment from the county. The role of the city council is to provide recommendation to the county, but ultimately, the county has jurisdiction here. This is the current existing county zoning districts, and again, the identified property in the boundary in red. It's currently zoned agricultural and surrounded by county residential, residentially-zoned land. Previously, we've had a similar request in the last year, last 12 months, in this vicinity, the smaller wedge-shaped property to the south of American Legion Road shown in this inset was requested for rezoning. In a similar situation to this one is in conflict with our current existing fringe area agreement. That particular request went through the process, outlined in the fringe area agreement of a conflict resolution committee meeting, a joint meeting between city council members and Johnson County Board of Supervisors to discuss that. Ultimately, the city did recommend approval of that with some direction to staff to begin an update of the fringe area agreement to address these kinds of conflicts. These conflicts are arising primarily because the fringe area agreement is older, and the county has updated its comprehensive land use plan map and is proceeding to rezone land within its jurisdiction to, in conformance with this comprehensive plan. This map shows the county's comprehensive plan and the location of the subject property well within an area that they have identified as appropriate for future residential. As I said tonight, this is a city council recommendation to Johnson County Planning and Zoning Commission. And again, the Board of Supervisors does make the ultimate decision. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend at its October 3 meeting to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning, although it's technically not consistent with the currently adopted fringe area. That recommendation was based on the understanding that staff is, that a similar property had gone through this process and ended up ultimately being recommended, and that staff is currently working with county staff to amend the fringe area agreement. I think that includes my staff report.
Carbon emission analysis, did we look at number of trips? This is nearly certain to be an auto-centric development with virtually no access to walkable services. Am I correct in that?
Right, there's no existing sidewalk system to connect this to the city.
All auto, okay.
Any other questions for Danielle?
No.
I don't hear any, thanks. Counsel, well, anybody else want to address this? Oh, two people. It's not all about Liz, Liz.
Gina Landa with MMS Consultants. I was here when we talked about that triangle piece to the south of American Legion Road as well. Same client requesting rezoning. That one actually moved through the subdivision process. This one really is just purely rezoning. Lot A Red Wing that we're talking about, Lot A, was planted in the 80s and was designed in the 80s to be residential. And it's just kind of sad, you know, nothing really going on, except for farming it for the last little bit. It's now in the land use plan for the county for residential. That's kind of, I guess, the next step. So that's why we're moving forward on this. And no, this is a county subdivision, so yes, this, I mean, you can bike to Iowa City, for sure. I would choose not to, two miles away. But definitely, this is county, so yeah. Do you have any questions for me, I guess?
Any questions for Gina?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking my comments again. My name is Liz Moss. I appreciate this opportunity to speak whenever there's an agenda item like this, more because it's just nice to share what the community's feeling. And I know Tom Gelman, and I know he's trying to keep you guys on track and get you home at a nice time, and I appreciate that. But I think it's important to have this kind of discussion, because it does bring awareness to the developers of what the community feels about these kinds of developments that are happening. And this is just another good example. I realize you can't change the ordinance for one project, but using these, my comments usually are just made as an example of, hey, hey, we need to change some things. I realize that this, the previous development happened, and we might not have it the way we want it, and that's totally fine, but we need to work towards making these changes. Same here. This is another sort of typical thing, actually. In July, I sent you guys an email about the other property with the same kinds of comments. As you said, Rockne, you know, it's another one of those where you're going to have to drive, and incentivizing people to make better choices, reduce our carbon footprints, you know my drill. So working with the county to try and make these things happen so that we don't have this type of project that just continually comes up with our .9-acre lots, you know, kind of large lots, it doesn't make sense from a land use perspective, certainly not from a water quality standpoint and stormwater management either. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz. Anyone else? Sure, go ahead.
The county is very cognizant about the driving back and forth. That is why this was designated as a residential area for land use for residential, because it is within two miles of a city. There are a lot of pieces out there in the middle of the county that are 15 miles away from cities, that are six miles away from the city of Swisher, from Sheweville, that developers are wanting to rezone to residential. And they are being denied at the county because of that. The county does not want to see little bits of residential here and there, all over the county. This is a nice big chunk of residential. It's already been residential since 80s. There are currently over 80 homes in this area. It feels like a residential area when you drive to it. Unfortunately, the county calls it the land of a thousand driveways, that's what they call it, because there are so many homes there. There's a brand-new school, brand-new elementary school out there. So the city, or the county, is very cognizant of the driving. That is why they have decided that this is designated for residential. It's close enough to the city that you are not going to be driving 10 miles to get somewhere. You're driving less than two. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Anyone else? See, no one else. Counsel, discussion?
I will support this. I think the county has certainly done a lot of work in their comprehensive plan and where they will allow residential and where they will not. I think they just got theirs redone in the last year or so. And I think that has been a big issue for them of not having a lot of sprawl, trying to control where property can and cannot be developed for residential within the county, outside the cities. And I think the point that this is within two miles of city limits, you already have a lot of residential there, makes a lot of sense that this is where you would have more. It gives people the opportunity for carpooling. It certainly is within reasonable distance for some people who might want to bike. But it's a lot better than being six or eight miles outside of any one of our communities in the county.
Well, as I understand it, I mean, we're just making a recommendation to the county, correct? And they are free to ignore, I mean, this is not a technical, I mean, ultimately the jurisdiction is going to rest with the county in terms of their decision. So I think we do need to send a message. Now, if we're just in an ordinary, we have a goal for significant carbon emission reductions by 2050 and 2030. And we lament all of the time, all the powers that we don't have, and all of the inability that we don't have to be able to implement that goal. And then we've had these fringe, one-acre, low-density residential that are not close to services, that are not walkable, they're not very bikable. And as far as my time on council, there has been very little opposition to these. I've been sort of a candle in the wind. I don't know how we're going to get there until we send a message to the county that this is an exurban development. It is, and it doesn't necessarily have to be that way. I mean, you look at like we're doing in our South District Plan, we're looking at a more of a missing-middle concept with some neighborhood commercials, some amenities out there. So I'm not necessarily opposed to all development into greenfield areas. But I think we're making a mistake by not sending a message to the county that this is, we will not achieve our goals if we keep supporting projects like this, unless I'm wrong. I mean, the automobile is one of the key contributors to carbon emissions, and it's trips, more than anything else, that lead to that. And if we're going to support these sorts of projects, how are we going to be, how do we seriously say that we're achieving our carbon emission goals? And it's for the exact opposite reason that, you know, I support so strongly what we're doing in Riverfront Crossing, because it is dense, it is close to downtown, it is close to amenities, it is walkable, it is bikable. it is walkable, it is bikable. It does align and have convergence with that. So this is not a huge project. Is it going to be the end of the world if it goes through? No, it's not. Ultimately, the county's going to make their decision. But let's send a signal to them that, no, we don't, we don't think these sorts of developments are appropriate, and we recommend that you deny it.
So, go right ahead. I think we should send a letter of support. I do hear what Rockne's saying, and I, I think that it's very valid, that we send a message, but I do, don't think that this is the appropriate method to send the message. I think we do, we have our 100 days report coming out, and I think that is the time where we can have a fruitful conversation with the county and let them know about our plan, and then get into some more actionable things that they can, you know, really be cognizant of to help us as, you know, not only Iowa City, but, you know, countywide and even throughout the state, achieve the goal. But I, I hear what you're saying, and I 100% agree. I don't think that this would be the method to do that.
Also, I hear what you're saying, and we know that we need to reduce the carbon emission and everything, but she just mentioned that there is 80 residents live there. That means they're already using their car regardless if we approve this or not. This is happening. You know, I, I just think we, we cannot do anything at this moment because there is people live there, they're using their car and everything. If we said yes, if we said not, we are not going to eliminate them from using their car. Anyway, I will be supporting for this for now, yeah.
How about the rest of you?
Well, with all due respect, Rockne, I'm, I'm just really confused on where you're going with this. As, as Mazza here just mentioned, there are already 80 units out there. You just recently just didn't even blink an eye at the five stories with however many residents that are going to be there, the 259 parking spaces. And then recently, another project soon to be before us again was going to have a thousand residents in it and however many cars with that. And you didn't even blink an eye, but yet you, you're having difficulty with this, this project. I, I'm in favor of it because I think it sounds like it, it will be a very good development. And, and it looks on a map like it's, it's very far, but if it's two miles, that's, that's good. I, I live four miles from here, for heaven's sakes, and so that's even closer than, than I live to City Hall, so that's a quick bike ride, and so I, I don't see any problem with it.
Well, I appreciate the context you gave on the two miles versus the six miles. I think that's useful. Is this a project I am in love with? You know, I think, you know, there, it's, it's, it's not something I'm fully supportive of, and yet it's sort of the world we live in at the moment. I, I especially, you know, this labeling of the, the land of a thousand driveways. I, I mean, I would much prefer if we were to develop in this sort of rural location that the, the lots be clustered rather than large lot, so that there would be some sense of place, if you will, to the community rather than these large lot developments. I do think that's part of a longer conversation. You know, how do we, how do these small settlements on the edge of town, how can we develop them in a way where they have their own sense of place rather than the large lot subdivision? But for the time being, I'll support this.
So I'm going to support the rezoning, not because I'm in love with it, like you said, John. I'm in love with a lot of things, but not this particular project. But I'm going to support it mainly because I'm thinking about the real world we, we live in, and by which I mean, right now, there's no regional vision about how development should occur, and I don't see any likelihood that that's going to happen anytime in the near-term future. So without that, then it seems to me, this is about the best we could expect to get. I take Gina's point that there are already 80 or so residences out there, and this will permit more, and they're kind of clustered. It's not ideal from my point of view, as you know, Rockne and John, you know, and everybody else here knows. But then the other reason I would support it is because, just because vehicles are powered by gasoline right now, does not mean in 10 years, they will be powered by gasoline. I think we are looking at a trend toward electrification of motor vehicles, and therefore, the, the concern about carbon emissions from motor vehicles, I think, will decline. I'm hopeful about that, especially if Congress adopts that Energy Innovation and Dividend Act that I referred to earlier in our work session, and so on. So I'm going to support the, the letter and move ahead on that. So I think we're in a position to do a voice vote now, right? So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
A motion carries six to one. Item 13, Airport Zoning. This is an ordinance amending Title 14, entitled Zoning Code, Chapter 6, entitled Airport Zoning, to update the airport zoning requirements based on the new airport layout plan, closing of the north-south runway, and changes in FAA, Federal Aviation Administration, regulations. I'll open the public hearing. All right, Mark, Mike, sorry, excuse me.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Mike Tharp, I'm the Airport Operations Specialist at the Iowa City Airport. With me is Melissa Underwood with SEH. She is, was our lead consultant on developing this code update, and talk to you a little bit about how we got from where we were to here. The last time we updated the airport zoning code was after, again, major planning projects, 2002. Since then, several things have happened in terms of relation to the airport. One runway has been decommissioned, the north-south runway, and that's been decommissioned for some time. FAA definitions on airspace and what's required have changed. Also, our, our planned usage from the 1996 master plan didn't quite live up to where we thought it was going to be, and some of these code changes are reflective of that as well. The process itself really started with the updates of the airport master plan in 2016 as well as the airport layout plan. That's what I just went over. We also have grant insurances that are put in place by both the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration, and the Iowa DOT whenever we accept support for funding projects. And that's basically operating the airport in safe and efficient manners, so keeping approaches clean, things, things like that. And one of the ways to do that is, is by having a, an current airport zoning code. As the airport layout plan exists, the airport layout plan is basically the wish list of, of the, how the airport commission feels the airport would develop over the next 20 years or so, if there was unlimited resources and opportunities to invest in the airport. So what we see here is, is basically that airport layout plan condensed in one, the airport master plan condensed in one picture. It does show the, the changes of the runway category definition, some, some shifting of the runway 12-0 or crosswind runway to bring some of those approaches closer to the airport property as opposed to having those further out. As the current airport zoning ordinance exists, again, 1836, that north-south runway still exists. Runway 25 shows actually a precision, precision approach path, something that is not achievable these days with the FAA regulations. And then we've got the, just definition up change, definition changes for runway 12-0 and 7. What the plan does is, is turns it into that. Again, you can see 1836 is removed from the definition and the mapping. Runway 25 is, has been shrunk down. It's, it's a non-precision approach path. Same thing with 3-0. Those are our two runways that have instrument approaches attached to them. And then 7 and 12 match the, the definitions. What brought this about, again, the, the runway design code change. So each runway has a specific aircraft that is basically aircraft type that it's designed to handle. Back in 1996, that aircraft was projected to be something like a Gulfstream 4-5, where you have 19, 20 passengers on a fairly large business jet. We do see that aircraft, but it doesn't meet the FAA definition of 500 operations a year to become the, the aircraft that becomes the designated category. So what it does is it backs that runway down to a lesser category. It doesn't prohibit the Gulfstreams from using the airport, but we're just not designing for that to be the common aircraft. Again, runway 725 updated for the approach. Runway 12-3-0 remains the same size, but the location shifts, and then we remove the, the language reflecting 1836. Included with this update, we've added additional mapping to the airport zoning code. So what you saw was the overlay, and we'll also include basically zoomed-in sections of each runway end. Does make it a little easier to see, so you can picture, especially for developers or anybody that's looking to do any projects near, near, or in line with an airport end, how these zones are going to impact them on a little bit easier scale to, to see. So each 1, 7, 2, 5, 12, 3, 0. And then last, the last couple of changes that are made, are recommended to be made to the zoning code reflect the penalties that are in the city code as opposed to having something formally written within the code itself that might need updated on, on a, kind of a non-standard basis. We re-reference the city code, so the, if that piece of the legislation is updated by councils in the future, we don't have to come back and redo this one. We also update the Notice for Post Construction and Alteration. That is the process that developers or anybody doing alterations to buildings use to conduct what's called an airspace study so that they can confirm their project is not going to impact any of the airport approach zones. And that's all I got with that. I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
You and I joked a little bit beforehand, Mike, about how, how frequently the Airport Zoning Board does its work, and I think you said there's been one other time in your experience?
Yeah, the, one other time we did, and that was just to add some language so that we could allow for, for taller buildings downtown in, in certain situations.
All right, any questions for Mike or Melissa?
I so appreciate your knowledge on this.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else want to address this topic? Because if not, I'm going to close the public hearing, which I hope I already opened. Did I open the public hearing? Yeah, good. Thank you. So I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion for first consideration, please?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Swaye, seconded by Teague. Discussion.
Sounds good to me.
Well, I just found all those drawings really fascinating.
The first one was great.
It looked like a Russian constructivist painting to me.
Well, Bruce and I both live very close to the airport, so I was appreciating the drawings also from that concept and trying to figure out where my house was and, and how I've noticed the change over the years, the direction the, the planes are taking for coming in and going out. So I appreciate that, and I, I love the airport. I think it's pretty good for Iowa City.
You mean, they don't fly overhead anymore?
From a different direction.
Yeah.
More towards Bruce's house.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Frogmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thanks. Item 14, Disorderly Conduct and Disorderly House. This is an ordinance amending Title 8, entitled Police Regulations, Chapter 5, entitled Miscellaneous Offenses, to amend the ordinance so that it complies with a recent federal court decision. This is first consideration. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Salee. Discussion. Eleanor, do you want to say anything about this?
I can. There was a federal court decision that actually related to a, or was dealt with a charge that had been made by city police officers outside of Planned Parenthood under the state disorderly house code. And it was a First Amendment violation being alleged, and the court found that the state code was vague and that it, it was not constitutional. We have our disorderly house provision in the city code as well as our, I mean, disorderly conduct provision as well as our disorderly house provision suffer from the same problems, and so we're correcting that here.
Okeydoke.
Okay.
Any questions for Eleanor?
No.
Hearing none, roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Frogmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 15, Assessment Schedule. This is a resolution adopting an assessment schedule of unpaid mowing, cleanup of property, snow removal, sidewalk repair, and stop box repair charges, and directing the clerk to certify the same to the Johnson County Treasurer for collection in the same manner as property taxes. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Teague, seconded by Swaye. Does anybody want to address this topic? All right, I'm not seeing anybody, no discussion. Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Frogmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 16, Announcement of Vacancies New. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. We have one vacancy to fill an unexpired term on the Historic Preservation Commission for an at-large position. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, November the 26th, 2019. Item 17, Announcement of Vacancies Previous.
Sorry, I should have put accept correspondence on there.
Oh, could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Teague. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 17, Announcement of Vacancies Previous. We have one vacancy to fill a five-year term on the Board of Adjustment, three vacancies to fill three-year terms upon appointment to the Climate Action Commission, three vacancies to fill three, three-year terms on the Human Rights Commission, two vacancies to fill four-year terms on the Parks and Recreation Commission, two vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Public Art Advisory Commission, and two vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Senior Center Commission. Applications for these positions must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, November the 12th of this year. We also have one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment to the Human Rights Commission, and applications for that position must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, October the 29th of this year. And we have one vacancy to fill a five-year term on the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, and one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission for the East College Street District, and one vacancy to fill an unexpired term effective upon appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission's Woodlawn District. Vacancies for those positions will remain open until filled. Community comment? Anybody want to talk to us?
Hello, Charlotte Langkaitis, Deputy City Liaison, University of Iowa Student Government. It's homecoming week, as you may have noticed with all the decorations around campus. So I just wanted to point out a few of the bigger events, and also, the city council forum at the university is tomorrow from 7:00, 8:30 PM at the North Room of the IMU. So I know I'll see some of you there, but I'm excited for that event, should be good. Tomorrow, there's also the multicultural block party right before the city council forum from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at the Cultural and Resource Centers on the west side of campus. On Thursday, Iowa Shout is just like a bunch of student performances, so it should be a lot of fun. It's from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at the Pinnacle, and then on Friday, you are all going to be in the parade, correct? Yes, okay, that's exciting. I, sorry, I texted Austin to see if he was interested in, in walking with you all if that invitation still stands.
Wow, any objection to that?
No.
No, fabulous.
Okay, sounds good. And then, yeah, Saturday, we got our game against Purdue at 11:00 AM. But yeah, that's all I, I have for you. But yeah, thank you. Hope to see you at some of the events.
All right, we can move to item 19, City Council Information, and let's start with We can move to item nineteen, city council information, and let's start with Pauline and move to her right.
Okay. It's been pretty busy last couple of weeks. On Thursday, October third, I attended the Iowa Women's Foundation Luncheon at the Corvale Marriott. It was very well-attended. Not all women. It was a very diverse group of attendees, including some of our city staff. Great luncheon and great speaker, Dr. Angela Sadler Williamson was the keynote speaker. She's a award-winning independent filmmaker, most recently known for documentary about her cousin, actually her cousin, Rosa Parks. And she's also the author of a newly released book titled Women Who Eliminate. I haven't, I read the book, but it just, from the title, sounds like it'd be very good. On Saturday, the fifth, the CWJ Gala was a great event. I can let Mazza here elaborate on that a little bit, but it was also a very diverse and large group of attendees, but a wonderful event. And also on Sunday, the sixth, which she can also elaborate if she'd like, the event titled Connecting Iowans to Sudan. It was an event hosted by CWJ that was built to spark cultural exchange, and, and it really did. It was just a great group of people. One of the guest speakers was very impressive, and correct me on this, Dr. Mohamed Al Hassan, who was one of apparently a key players in the nonviolent revolution against what was seen as, as a corrupt regiment. Thursday, the tenth, I attended an initial planning meeting for what they're calling a prevention coalition. It's a group of individuals trying to establish a countywide substance misuse and prevention coalition that's going to look at harm reduction and risk reduction strategies around substances to promote a healthier environment for youth and adults throughout Johnson County. Staff from Prelude spearheaded it, but it included interested parties from, from many realms. My interests included, of course, what we as a city should be looking at and be aware of and, and plan for. We even talked about the vaping. That's, that's considered a substance and obviously is getting a lot of attention and a lot of concern. So we're going to be looking at that also. That's all.
Yes. So on the fifth of October, Sa, no, Friday, the fourth, Greta Thunberg was here.
Yes.
And that was an amazing event, thanks to the city of Iowa City and all that were involved, and especially the student climate strikers for all of their work in making this possible. It was a wonderful event, and I'm sure others will talk about it because there was a few of us there. On the Sunday, the sixth, I did attend what you just mentioned about connecting Iowa to Sudan. And I was really impressed with the information about their fight for democracy. And that's something that we really do take for granted, and so was very appreciative, appreciative to learn firsthand from some people that's really been in that fight. And that, that was a wonderful event with a lot of good food, a lot of good food. And then on Wednesday, there was three of us counselors that actually did the park and rec tour. And I'm sure some of us are going to talk about that, but we have some beautiful parks throughout our community. And thanks to Julie Sidell Johnson, who took us on that tour. It was awesome and amazing. On the tenth, Trail, Trail of Johnson County had a wonderful event at the Corvale Library. But I can tell you that it was so well-attended that they really needed a larger venue to really hauze all of the people that came to celebrate with Trail of Johnson County. And, and they are definitely making it possible for elders to remain in the community and, and continue to be active and gray, as I love to say. And then on, on this past Sunday, the thirteenth, there was a play or reading of The Laramie Project at New Song. And this was about the twenty-first, well, it's the twenty-first anniversary of Matthew Shepard's death. And so having the community come out to just hear the reading, it was great that the readers were very compassionate after there was a question and answer. And it was very emotional. But I think that the one thing that I kind of left with is the fight for the LGBTQ plus community is still of very well and alive today, although we have made great strides, One Iowa, and there, this is the tenth year of marriage equality. And One Iowa actually was a sponsor of this event, and One Iowa was influential in getting the marriage equality here in Iowa. So even though it was a, The Laramie Project was very moving, but I also left very inspired by all the work that Iowa is doing within the LGBTQ plus world. There's a couple of events coming up, and I just want to mention one, and that is the Refugee, I want to make sure that I get it right.
Immigrant and refugee.
Immigrant and refugee recognition dinner. And that's going to be this Saturday at St. Patrick's Church from six PM to eight PM. And it's going to be an awesome event. I'm planning to attend, but they are going to be honoring our mayor there as well on this Saturday. And so wanted to give a shout out to him for all the work that you do. One last thing is the Human Rights Awards Breakfast, and that's going to be next Wednesday on the twenty-third.
Yeah, you guys did everything that I wanted to say. Okay, on, on Friday, the fourth, I attend an event called Iowa Ideas in Cedar Rapids. That event was about like, yes, ways to help immigrant navigate, how Iowans, Iowan can help immigrant navigate, and also the struggle that immigrant face. It was really nice event, and it, it ended like, I guess almost noon, and I just have to run to meet Greta. And it was really amazing event with Greta. And I think like, I really would like to shout out and thank those students from City High and all the young people who really started this fire, which is great. And just, just to see a lot of people attending this kind of event, that means we are in the right of that direction for climate action plan, because a lot, it seemed like a lot of people interesting in doing this, which is really great. And for also Sunday, Saturday, yeah, of course, was Gala. It was really nice event. A lot of people came, and we sold out the ticket, even Rochne cannot attend because he couldn't find a ticket. But it really was nice event. And on the sixth, the Sudanese event, Connecting Iowan to Sudan, I guess the mission or the goal of that event was really, since there is a large community from Sudan living Iowa right now, and the way that we can make it one community, because immigrant tend to isolate. And usually, people would understand another culture through food, when music and art. And that's why we had this event. And I, I think this is really, by the way, that now, so far, Pauline and Bruce talk about it, I guess it did the mission for it, the goal, it met the goal, because you're saying you understand a lot, think about what's going on, and you can now like relate to those people and understand what's going on in, in Sudan too. Also, we have, yeah, the speaker was amazing. Hopefully, he will be the next president of Sudan, because we were thinking that will be true. Also, I want to thank the city for sponsoring the event, and this was really great. Thank you. And also, I guess I'm try hard to come, but all, all I listening was going on with him on that day, but thank you for the, you know, the willingness to come, but you can. When, I think after that, did I have something else? I don't think, yeah. I went on Sunday, I missed the fairground, public, of course, because I went to Dubuque. There is, you know, a mobile home park, they also, you know, another one that been bought by another company, not Haven Park, but they are really increasing the rent and the water. They never been paying water before, they start paying water, they start paying for trash or pets and all this kind of thing. And we went there to help them organize and create a ton of association so we can have a network of mobile home around the country, because right now, the goal is to write a petition, and all the mobile home parks should sign that petition so we can have something to send it to the moon, to help those people to, you know, pass some laws that will benefit the resident rather than just owner. Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, to, to double up on what everyone had said about the Sudanese event on October sixth, it was incredible. I mean, it wasn't just, it was history, it was art, it was politics, it was music, it was dancing, the Kandaka, the Warrior Queens, oh my gosh, they were so good. They were mesmerizing. And the singing, like, we have a future pop star. Is she from Iowa City?
Yes, she is.
She's pretty amazing.
She is from Iowa.
Okay.
She doesn't even know it looks like you.
She is like, awesome. So it was incredible, so.
And dancer, one of them is my daughter, okay?
Well, she's great too. They're all fabulous.
I just want to say that.
And so you out in the community, if you ever hear of an event involving Sudanese, like, go, because they are so much fun, and it's just, it's just terrific. I'm going to be with Jim, and I hope everyone else can come to the refugee dinner this Saturday night. Those are always a really great event, what a contribution our refugee community has made from throughout the world, and really proud that we've really welcomed and incorporated as well as we can. More work remains to be done, and I'm sure we'll have those conversations with the refugee community, but it's really great to celebrate and of course, to have great food, which I always like. And, and I'm really looking forward to the Human Rights Breakfast on October twenty-third at six thirty. I think that's always a very invigorating event to celebrate some of the great work the local leaders have done. I know my friend Jesse Case is going to be one of the award winners, so it's really good to see then that hard work is recognized, because a lot of times it is really thankless work. So it's good to sort of recognize that moving forward. So a lot of good stuff. And stay tuned, there is an election this fall, last time I checked. So do stay tuned for the various events, so people can get out there and get information about the candidates and, and decide who they want to vote for.
Yeah, there, there were amazing number of events over the last couple of weeks. So just, yeah, the Greta's visit and the Sudanese event were truly extraordinary. So thanks, everyone who helped bring those together. I, I did want to mention October twenty-fourth, since we will not be meeting before then. Chuck Marone of Strong Towns is coming to Iowa City. He will be speaking at Merge at twelve noon.
When?
October twenty-fourth, Thursday.
Who's, who's organizing that?
Who is organizing it? The, forgetting his name.
Urban planning's involved in it.
You know? Urban planning, but who was it who we heard from?
I'm drawing a blank.
That's okay, just curious.
We're a co-sponsor with the university, a couple of different divisions in the university.
So he, he has published a book, and so it's a book tour, but he'll be giving a probably, I would say, an hour talk. You know, I've, I've been a participating member, so to speak, of Strong Towns, probably for six or seven years now. I think they're a really important voice in question of how, how do we build strong towns? So it's, it's great that, he was here about four years ago, and so he'll be coming back for a second visit. So encourage everyone to, to attend if you're available.
Sounds great.
Attended the ICAD annual meeting a week or so ago out at the Walker Homestead. Hadn't been out there before. It's a beautiful, beautiful location. So they were celebrating, I think ICAD was celebrating their thirty-fifth anniversary, and so had a great event out there with downtown that day for Greta's presentation. It was great to see the, the crowd there. And again, I just want to double down on the, the praise for the city with about forty-eight hours' notice, an internationally known activist who, for some people, draws controversy. And also thank you to Little Village for their coverage. I was reading an article they wrote today on some of their coverage and Facebook post, and then the Facebook post that came out of Waterloo, and, you know, their notifying of the school district up there and the police in terms of making sure that safety was obviously a major concern that day, and saw our officers out and about and, and up on the rooftops, and appreciate Jeff's efforts with staff to pull all that together in such a short period of time. Had a great tour of the parks the other night with Bruce and John and some of the commission members, seeing lots of projects that are hopefully getting finished up this year, but probably won't, due to how late we are in the season, and things that'll be coming, coming on board for projects in the coming year or two. So it was great to see that and meet some of the commission members as well. And if you haven't driven down Dodge Street recently, it is being resurfaced. Don't be in a hurry. I have never in, I can't remember how many years I've lived here, forever, all my adult life, I have never seen the traffic backed up on Dodge Street like it was tonight. And I was running later than normal coming to the meeting. I got here on time, but, I mean, it was, you came around the corner up at the top, and I couldn't see the end of the traffic all the way down through, so. But the right-hand lane looks great where they've gotten it resurfaced, and so I'm not sure, it looks like the weather's great for the rest of this week, so I'm not sure how quickly that'll move. But if you happen to be coming down that way, just allow a little extra time, because it's only one lane, so.
This involves restriping too, right? Do you know when, when will it be finished?
I don't have an exact date. It should be, it should be done this season. There's just, it's not a full resurfacing, it's just patching.
That's what I thought, yeah.
And then the striping will take place.
Okay, so I'll mention several things, because it's been a very busy two weeks for me. On the second of October, I participated in a question and answer period after a really excellent presentation by Raj Patel at the Sustainable Land Trust event at the Engled. And this is not our Raj Patel, and then there were lots of jokes about that at the Engled. It was somebody else named Raj Patel, but it was really terrific presentation and Q&amp;A. And I too had a chance to go up to that local, was it local? No, no, the Iowa Ideas Conference in Cedar Rapids on the fourth, and participated in a panel discussion about local-led initiatives. So I talked about climate action, drawing on all the good stuff that Ashley feeds me whenever I ask for things like that. The visit by Greta Thunberg, wow. It was quite the thing standing up on that stage, looking out, out at that audience, right? I know you two folks were there. And like, like Susan just said, I have nothing but the highest praise for our staff and how skillfully they facilitated the event on such short notice. I learned about it, what was it, Wednesday morning at nine AM?
Yes.
And talked to Jeff about it shortly thereafter, and next thing you know, they got it all lined up. How did you do that? And I don't know, maybe, maybe as many as five thousand people were there. It's quite the thing. But I especially, like Susan said, want to praise our police officers, especially Captain Denise Brotherson, Captain Bill Campbell, and all the specific officers I saw, and there are a whole bunch I did not see, for the, the great work in ensuring that the event proceeded safely. Bravo to them. Beyond that, let's see. CWJ Gala, well, yeah, that was good. Sudanese community event, fabulous. On the tenth, I had the chance to make welcoming comments to attendees at the Iowa Chapter of the American Planning Association's Annual Conference, and turned out to be held in the vitro by accident, but it went very well. So that was a good thing to do. On the eleventh, I toured the renovated Lincoln Elementary School with Principal Julie Robinson. It was great fun to do, and I say principal, she's also the principal of Horace Mann, so she got kind of a tough load right now. On the thirteenth, I met, this is a really surprise for me, and you all may not even know about it, but on the thirteenth, meeting Sunday, I met with the mayor of Parkland, Florida, Parkland, Florida, Christine Honchowski. It happened with about a day's notice, and she was up here for other reasons, so we talked about those other reasons. But while she and I were talking, we focused considerable time on the, the mass killing of thirteen students, I think, at Parkland that occurred about eighteen months ago, and how the effect that that had on the community, and what she personally had to do in response to it. And I can tell you, a large part of what she had to do was meet with people face-to-face, either in small groups or larger groups or one-on-one, to let them rant, rage, cry, grieve, and so on, in or, in order to help them release all the tension that they were feeling afterwards. And she also emphasized how important it was and how hard it was, still ongoing, to help the community itself heal, because it was a nineteen-year-old former student who killed thirteen other people. So that had a very traumatic effect on the, not just the students, but the whole community. the whole community. So I've talked with Jeff about this, you know, we've been very lucky so far, with such a thing could happen here in one way or another. And I remember when I was speaking at, over at the IMU many months ago, after the Tree of Life synagogue, the shootings at the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh. And I had accumulated a list of major shootings that occurred over the last several years. And it was just, it just made me want to weep, because there's just so much of that going on, and such things could happen here. And we could learn a lot from the mayor of Parkland. So there's that. And I'm thrilled that we have a spot, not a, we don't have a, what do you call it?
Float.
We don't have a float, but we have a spot in the homecoming parade, and I'm really thrilled about that. I think we can have a lot of fun doing this. And as far as I know, it's the first time city government's done this before. I hope you're going to be there. I hope you're going to be there. I think it could be a lot of fun. I'm really looking forward to the Immigrant Refugee Association's Dinner at St. Pat's on the 18th.
19.
19. Did I do that again? Yeah. Alas, I won't be able to attend the Human Rights Commission Awards Event next week, nor will I be able to hear Chuck Marone speak. This is the second time I will have missed him, because I have to be out of town for a planned trip. But I'm sure both will go brilliantly. That's it for me.
Nothing.
The first meeting of the Climate Action Commission was held. They had a quorum to meet last Monday, and they are finalizing bylaws, and they should be ready for the Rules Committee soon.
Great. And we just gave them a task, too. Eleanor? Kelly? All right, wouldn't you know it, I think we're done. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved by Sully, second by Teague. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned.